Good evening and welcome to the October 15th meeting of the Hickory City Council. At this time, I would like to ask the Reverend Tamika Garrison, the Director of Faith Community Relations at Carolina Carrington, to the podium for our invocation. I would ask that if you're able to please stand and remain standing after the invocation for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you for being here.
Let us pray. God, we thank you for this time to pause. We thank you for the ways in which you call people to serve, and we thank you for the rights to be able to elect those people to serve. And now, I come to you humbly to ask that you empower everyone in this room, both those who are elected, to keep in mind the best interest of everyone, and those who elected them, to keep in mind that this job is not for the lighthearted. God, we ask all these things here today for the best interest of Hickory and the people that live here, but we ask as we leave this place that you inspire us to make a difference, to make this a better community. It's all these things that we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I want to thank everybody for being here, but especially, I'm told that we have some special guests this evening from Lenora Ryan University. We have some students of the Lenora Ryan Community Studies Class, which is under Professor Dr. Stokes. So if those folks would just raise their hand and be recognized, Dr. Stokes and any of her students that may be here. The rest of you are here voluntarily. They're here to learn. But we appreciate everybody that's here this evening and our special guests, the students from Lenora Ryan University. So we'll get started with the next item on the agenda. We have a special presentation this evening. So at this time, I would ask Ms. Angela Lawrence to the front. She's the Executive Director of the Patrick Beaver Learning Resource Center, and this is Duxlexia Awareness Month, and I'm going to come up there and we're going to read a proclamation. All right? Angela? I'm going to read this real quick. It says, "Duxlexia Awareness Month, whereas dyslexia is the most common learning disability in children and persists throughout life, affecting 10% to 20% of the population regardless of race, gender, age, socioeconomic status; and whereas dyslexia is a specific learning disorder that is neurobiological in origin, and it is characterized by difficulties with reading, writing, and spelling despite normal intelligence. Whereas early identification of dyslexia is critical. Whereas those children with dyslexia benefit greatly from teachers trained in multisensory structured literacy interventions and individualized instruction. Whereas Dyslexia Awareness Month offers an opportunity to celebrate the accomplishments and contributions of children and adults with dyslexia, and to recognize the educators, trained volunteer tutors, families, and friends who play a vital role in supporting their success. Now therefore, I Hank Guest, Mayor of the City of Hickory, on behalf of the Hickory City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of October as Dyslexia Awareness Month in the City of Hickory, and commend its observance to all citizens." Angela, I'll present this to you. That's my. The next item on the agenda, we always give an opportunity at the beginning of each minute, each meeting, for anyone that would like to address the council, and we certainly want to do that this evening. We do have some folks that are listed on the agenda, and we also have somebody that has signed up. It's not necessary that you do that, but it does help us to prepare. We'll always allow anyone who's present that wants to speak to be able to address the council. This is not a time for us to answer you back. We listen to what it is that you have to say, and then if there's any response necessary, we will get back with you at a later date. So at this time, I'm going to go in order as to the agenda, and the first person that has requested to be heard is Ms. Rebecca Robinson. We do ask that you come to the podium, that for the record, that you state your name and residential address, and that you limit your speech to three minutes or less. So Ms. Robinson, welcome to Hickory City Council.
Thank you. I'm Rebecca Robinson, and I live on Springs Road in Conover, but I do work in the City of Hickory as a property manager, and have for 30 years, and have worked with the Hickory Housing Authority for 28 years of that. And in the last five years, we have seen a decline in the organization and the response to landlords and to the tenants that are under Hickory Housing Authority Section 8 vouchers. In the last two years, it has become very, very detrimental for landlords to even lease through Hickory Housing Authority because tenants are not getting the responses, landlords are not getting information. It's just like it's a zoo there right now. It took six months for a lady who got approved in November to get an inspection done, and she has an autistic, severely autistic son. We had to fight to get that taken care of. I had another lady who has a daughter with MS, who is on a mainstream voucher, and it took us three months to get them to clear up the financial side of it, to where the tenant was not having to pay 100% of her rent, because her daughter only brings in $11,000 a year in income. But when we went to a meeting with them, they had two other people's income sheets in this lady's folder saying that it was all her income. So it's been a very, very stressful five years. The turnover there is, you don't know who to call, you don't get anybody to answer the phone when you call the switchboard, and the people on the other end that have extensions, you might get a call back three to four weeks later unless you go there and hound them to get to talk to them. So something really needs to be done and get some organization there, because the tenants are suffering, the property managers and owners are suffering also. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Next is Mr. Tom Dixon.
First of all, I want to say I'm here because I read the news article from your last meeting. And I've always, I've lived in Catawba County for a long time, and I think local news is very important. I'm an avid reader of all the local papers, and I thought that was an excellent report.
For the record, if you would state your name and address.
All of them. All of the local papers.
No, I said for the record, if you would state your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Tom Dixon. I moved into Catawba County in 1964 with USDA, Department of Agriculture, and it was the name of the agency at that time was Farmers Home Administration. And we made all kinds of loans, but our name indication was primarily to farmers, but by the time I joined, it was a long way from that. When Kennedy came, was elected president, he came up with all sorts of wonderful programs, loan programs, to help local rural areas become more, to improve the economic conditions of the community. And one of those was housing. So I've had a great deal of experience with housing, right here in this county, in fact, 36 years as a loan officer. Our loans were very similar to Section 8, even to buy a house. The first program that we had was, the loan was made on the basis of the family income, and it had a variable interest rate from 1% to the market rate of the note, whatever that was. But the interest rate was based on the family's income. So I've been verifying income and making loans, just exactly like Section 8, except they were buying the house. Okay? And in my 36 years, I helped 5,000 people get a loan under this program, right here in Catawba County. But the newspaper was a good friend about again. We also have a multifamily housing program that operates the same way, only it's not Section 8. The interest is based on the family income of the people that rent there. The government regulates the rent, and the owner of the property pays market rent, but then the interest rate is adjusted down to 1% depending on who occupies the unit. So again, I feel like I'm qualified to address this subject. Also, in 1995, I did, on the multifamily units, they provided subsidy. Well, the state had a program where you could build a house and still have it to build, you get tax credits for building houses that fit income levels, various income levels. So I was lucky enough to get a loan to build two houses.
Excuse me, sir. Your three minutes is up. How much longer do you think it'll take to?
What am I doing?
For your presentation?
So were you going to make some comments about the Housing Authority? If you could cut straight to that, is that?
Do you have comments about the Housing Authority?
Okay, my experiences, I'm sorry.
Let me make a motion. I'm going to make a motion that we extend your time for two minutes. Would that be sufficient?
I guess.
Okay. I make a motion that we?
I don't see a clock around here. I don't have any idea how long I can talk.
So I'm making a motion that we extend your time for two minutes, sir.
Okay.
We have a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. It would be helpful if you would get to the part of your concerns about the public Housing Authority.
Okay, okay. I have, I'm familiar with Section 8. I've used Section 8 under the Western PMI Council of Government. First experience with an applicant, she's a friend of my granddaughter. She was, she did, that we own rental property, and she approached my granddaughter saying that she had a Section 8 voucher from the authority. She'd approved for $1,500 for a three-bedroom house. And so we happened to have one, only it was a two-bedroom house. This was early December. So we told her, sure. And she looked at it and wanted it. We didn't hear anything until early January. Didn't ever hear anything. The Housing Authority never contacted us. So in January, we rented the house to somebody else. $900 rent was on the house, and she wanted it, but we were never approached. So she said, "If you ever have another one, I'd like to see that." So I, we had another one about two, but it was, let's see, when was that? Actually, it was in January, or February, we had a three-bedroom house available, and so we told her she could have that. She was already approved for $1,500 and had the voucher. She just had to find a house. Well, here again, we just didn't hear anything. But the following day, well, I finally got them to send me, or told me to come up and fill out a landlord agreement. Filled it out within two days. Couldn't get anybody to come out to look at the house. Never could, nor could, this lady, everything she said was true. You can't get anybody on the phone in that place. The only way you really get to talk, they don't return a call, you just go up there and sit. So I finally went up there myself and said, and I said, "I want to see the person that approves these houses." Well, it was lunch break, and they came in after lunch break, and I believe it was Mrs. Richards. I told her why I was there. She said, "You got time?" I said, "Yeah, I got time." So I put in my vehicle and tried to show that house. And she immediately said, "Hey, you know, it's nice, we can approve this." Well, in April, this is first of January, of February, April, we finally got an approval. And the approval was for $1,350. No explanation. I'd held the house from February to April, and got an approval for $365, $1,365, not the $1,500 that she'd been, never had an explanation other than it didn't fit the formula. The second house, it worked. And about that time, I had another unit to come open. This was out near Killian's Cross Road. And?
Are you about to conclude, sir?
Well, I've got one more house to talk about now.
Okay. I think we'll let you, if you'll wrap it up, we'll let you continue.
Okay. I had a house become vacant, and while I was rehabbing it in March, a lady across the street came in, wanted to know what the rent was going to be, and I said, "Well, it's going to be $1,500." And she said, "Well, I really can't afford that." This lady was a single mom with two autistic adult children. Husband was deceased. She was living in a two-bedroom trailer, and the floor was in the unit we were riding, and the landlord wouldn't fix it. She didn't have anywhere else to go. Well, the more I thought about it, I just thought I ought to try to help that lady. So I introduced her to the Housing Authority. Meantime, another day that I was working, the neighbors came over one of them, and they was talking about how much the neighbors had helped her. She didn't have a driver's license, two adult children, and this lady by herself living in this house. So I came to the authority first to see if there was any way they could help her get into that house. I bought the income in and told them the price of the house, and I signed an agreement, the landlord agreement, and finally got her up there. But as I say, this was first of April, and I didn't hear anything until August. And when I got the notice, I didn't get a notice, the applicant called me and said she was not going to be able to take the house because she was only approved for $1,100 a month. The more I thought about that, I just, I just, bottom line is, I called the authority and told them that I was going to reduce the rent from $1,500 a month to $1,100 so she could move into it. And I've got one happy caper. Thanks for the tolerance.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon.
I just felt like I needed to say something. Reading that news article, it's like somebody up there told me that I needed to speak up, and that's why I'm here.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Please. I didn't say it, but we don't allow any type of outburst applause, cheering, cheering, or anything like that during the comment sections. All right. Is there anybody else? I've got one more that's signed up. Is there anybody here that didn't have an opportunity to sign up that would like to address the council? If you would, please approach the podium, state your name and your address, and please limit your conversation to three minutes or less.
Hi there. I am Stephen Henkel. I live in 6530 Emery Drive, Hickory, North Carolina. And I think two things are true here. One is that there is a serious concern over the Hickory Housing Authority, that they're not addressing the needs of the community, which are very real. We just heard two testimonies of how serious these needs are. And the other truth is that if we outsource this responsibility to some external body or regional body, then we are less focused on the local concerns and more focused on regional concerns. And if we continue in that direction, we may go from regional concerns to state concerns, and then from state concerns to national concerns. And the farther we get away from local concerns, the farther we get away from this community. And so my concern is that instead of fixing the Hickory Public Housing Authority, we're outsourcing this responsibility to someone who isn't us. Now, I think that Anthony Starr is fantastic. He's phenomenal. He's a Christian father Hickory guy, so if he could take charge of Hickory's PHA, that'd be awesome. But as it stands, we're looking at shirking this responsibility onto someone else, someone else who might be really qualified to do it. But I would much rather see us fix the problems we currently have, see if we can have our community rise to the occasion, and instead of saying, "Let's have someone else do this who's more experienced." So that's what I hope. I hope that you guys are genuinely looking at this and thinking, what do we give up if we have, what is it, WPCOG do this rather than Hickory? And what do we gain if we fix it ourselves and say, "You know what? We're going to do the hard work. We're going to try to make this thing better, listen to the concerns of the community, and take those to heart, and put the right people in the right position, and fix it." Because then, in the long term, we are still in control of our city. We're still in control of our community, of who lives here and who we're serving, and making sure that the people of this community are being served, rather than the concerns of the regional, state, or federal government. Thank you for your time.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? We have signed up to speak, Mr. Chris Washburn.
Hi, we're the council. My name is Chris Washburn. My address is 2331 23rd Street, Northeast Hickory. But I'm from 436 Second Street Place Southwest, Hickory, North Carolina, right over on the other side of the tracks here. As we know, Hickory's getting bigger. More people are coming. It's a whole lot harder to move around, especially downtown. I remember when the store right across the street, Fresh Share, was there. Now it's an apartment building. It's getting ready to be a big apartment building. With each one of those apartments, you had to come at least one or two cars. Right now, you can't even park downtown with the amount of cars we have now. What I'm proposing is a new business with my golf cart service, of bringing down, shifting people around downtown on golf carts. These golf carts are street legal. Seat belts, turn signals, windshield wipers, everything that's neat to be on the streets. Also, they can service streets anywhere between 15 to 35 miles an hour. So that means I can service all downtown, as far as down to the YMCA, for our hospital, which can alleviate some of the traffic. Now also, if a person may say, an order to the arcade downtown for food, now it becomes a golf cart lift service. We can deliver food as well. But my main thing is moving people around, because even when I came down just the other weekend for Oktoberfest, I'm seeing people parking so far away and having to walk with all their kids. This cart service seats five, one seats 12. So we're also able to help with that. Now I'll pass the logistic stuff over to somebody else.
Hi. I am Monique Washburn. The problem that we are encountering is the current ordinance does not include golf carts. So the current taxicab ordinance is for cars. We don't have doors, but we do have seat belts on every seat. We don't have meters. We have set prices. So all we're asking today is that you all consider our new business and change the taxicab ordinance to include the golf cart.
Because Hickory hasn't had cabs in six years. So again, like I said, we're offering this service where we can alleviate some of the traffic. Like I said, even the people that live over by the YMCA area, stuff like that, if they don't want to drive downtown, they can call. We can pick them up, take them downtown, and bring them back. Again, it's all within the 30, 15 to 35 mile an hour speed limit.
That the state requires.
That the state requires. Everything we have right now on the cart is all state required. All we need is a permit from the city to start my business here. Right now, I have some list of Lenora Ryan that do football games, maybe some of their things. Also, with the convention center, I may have some opportunities down there. But my main focus is downtown Hickory.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
Was there a name that you missed on the?
No, it was a substitute.
Okay. I'm sorry. That was what I was going to say.
That was Mr. Dixon. Is there anyone else that may not have known or didn't have an opportunity to address the council, and you would like to do that this evening? All right. Next item on the agenda is approval of our regular meeting of October the 1st, 2024. I'll entertain a discussion or a motion.
Move approval.
All right. We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That carries unanimously. Item number seven is a reaffirmation, ratification on second readings. Once again, I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That carries unanimously. Item number eight is our consent agenda. I'll ask if any member of council would like to have any item removed from the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That carries unanimously. We have three public hearings this evening. To introduce our first public hearing, I'll turn it over to our City Manager, Mr. Warren Wood.
Mr. Mayor Guest, members of City Council, Mr. Swanson. The first public hearing is consideration of the voluntary contiguous annexation of 151.218 acres located at 432 Catawba Valley Boulevard Southeast, and will be presented by Planning Manager Cal Overby.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Mayor Guest, members of council, Mr. Swanson. The item of consideration, again, is an application for a voluntary annexation for property owned by Blueberry Farms Hickory LLC. The property is located on Catawba Valley Boulevard, one of the addresses would be 2186, I believe. We're looking at a little over 151 acres of property at this particular location. The adjacent ward will be Ward 4, which will be Councilman Freeman's Ward. Currently, the property is vacant farmland, and the proposal is to annex the property and build a residential subdivision on the property. The map that I have here basically is showing the existing city boundaries. This property here was recently annexed. It's still coming. It's white. We hadn't updated our maps at that time. The next map is showing our zoning, as far as the city's zoning. All the areas shown in yellow are Hickory zoning, as well as the brown. This would be the town of Brookford and Hickory proper in this area here. So we're basically, Hickory's all around this property. The property's actually rezoned by council approximately two years ago from low-density residential to medium-density residential, which is the proposal here. In terms of just providing some better geography for it here, Catawba Valley Boulevard's coming in this area here. This is Stone Brook subdivision. This will be Grandview Middle School here, and our fire station's at this particular location.
Now, there's a church somewhere close by.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I'm sorry. I did not bring that up, council. Yes, sir. And that would be right here. Okay. And what I have here is I have a composite schematic of the developments going on. Being that this property is in our extraterritorial area now, we have permitting control over the property prior to annexation, so we get much further along when it's in our ETJ versus when it's not. So this is what we have here. Proposed property, several different pieces of property located here. Most of the property in these areas here, we're showing it hatched, are basically open space. The development in and of itself has about 43% to 44% open space, so we're only looking at a little more than half of it actually being developed. The development's right around 300 lots or units. There's some townhomes in here also. So we're looking at about two units an acre in particular property there. So that's kind of what we're looking at. The next one is the actual construction drawings that we received, "we" being staff received for review. And this is basically a cover sheet here, showing in more detail of what's actually going on in the property. Here, you're looking at single-family lots. We have townhomes in this area. They have connection here, Catawba Valley Boulevard, another one back over to 6th Street in this location here. And that's basically the development we're looking at here. With that, I will close my remarks and say that staff has found this petition to meet all their requisite requirements and statutes, and I will be more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Overby, could you go back to one of those maps for just a second, please?
The plan map, sir?
Yeah, any of the maps would be fine. That one will, either one of those will do. Can you orient us somewhere where the Hickory Police firing range is on that map?
Go back.
Let me go with this one here. It's actually, it's off of this map over here. It's about right in here is where it's at.
It's twice as far away as Stone Brook is.
Okay. That was my question, in proximity to the police firing range, where the nearest residents would be for this proposed development?
From the development, the nearest dwelling unit in the new development would be a quarter of a mile from the property boundary that the city owns. And there'd be another quarter mile or half a mile in total to where the firing range building actually sits.
And as Mr. Wood pointed out, there's already residents closer than that to the firing range, the existing now.
Yes. Brookfield, which is existing here, is substantially closer.
That's my only question.
I have a question.
Sir?
I have a question. Is Catawba Valley Boulevard maintained by the City of Hickory or North Carolina DOT?
That would be the Department of Transportation, sir.
Has there been any conversations with them about a school crossing between, right across from, between this subdivision and Grandview? Because it looks like there's an opportunity for pedestrian traffic for children that attend that school that live in this. that school that live in this subdivision.
There's not been a conversation about a school crossing. No, there's been conversations about traffic impacts and any road improvements to be approved. But there hasn't been one directly about a school crossing, if you will.
But we can, we can do that. Okay, yeah.
That could be part of discussion moving forward.
Yeah, I think that would make sense because, I mean, I can imagine there'll be pedestrian traffic, and if we can get kids to come out and walk to school, that's a good thing.
Or ride their bike.
Right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Any other questions from council?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, this is the first of three public hearings. In just a few minutes, I'll declare the public hearing open. But before I do that, I want to explain some rules that we have concerning public hearings. And of course, this applies to all three of our public hearings. If you wish to address the council, once again, we ask that you come to the podium and that you state your name and address for a public hearing. We allow up to 15 minutes for anyone that wants to speak in opposition of the concerns or the descriptions you've just heard from Mr. Overby concerning this annexation. We also allow up to 15 minutes if anyone would like to speak in favor. If necessary, we'll allow up to five minutes for rebuttal or surrebuttal. Once again, we ask that there be no outbursts, there be no clapping, cheering, or jeering. And just as a reminder, if you have any electronic device, if you would, please silence them at this time. So at this time, I'll declare the public hearing open and ask if there's anyone present that would like to speak in opposition of this annexation request you've just heard described by Mr. Overby. There being no one desiring to speak in opposition, I'll ask if there's anyone present that would like to speak in favor. There being no one desiring to speak, I'll declare the public hearing closed and entertain a motion or discussion from council.
Move approval of the contiguous annexation.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That motion carries unanimously. Our second public hearing, once again, I'll turn it over to our city manager, Mr. Warren Wood.
Thank you, Mayor Gess. Second public hearing is consideration of the voluntary non-contiguous annexation of 3.799 acres located at the eastern corner of the intersection of 21st Street Drive Southeast and 27th Street Drive Southeast. It'll again be presented by planning manager Cal Overby.
Thank you, sir. Yes, the next annexation is actually a satellite annexation, and the request is by RFW Properties. This is Ron Weber, who's actually here tonight. He's our president of our local home builders association here. And it's located at 21st Street Drive Southeast, which is common on Sweetwater Road. We're looking at about 3.8 acres of property, and the nearest ward will be Councilman Three, which will be Councilman Seaver. And currently, the property is vacant, but the proposal is to develop the property into a recreational vehicle storage facility, kind of like some of you see around here, the U-Haul place that I can think of on US 70 and some of the other locations like that. Basically, a location to get things out of your yard, just to have room for, kind of sort of. This is showing the current map of the City of Hickory's city limits and area. There's basically, sitting here is this one piece of property that's showing here is the RFW property. And the property across the street is the City of Hickory, which is satellite annexation. And you're looking at some of the proper boundaries around here. It's kind of a little mixture of contiguous and non-contiguous areas along that part of town there is what you're looking at. And the next slide is showing the zoning of the area. Pretty much the entire area through here is on industrial, with a tad bit of residential down toward I-40 and some office and traditional, which is near the hospital area. In terms of land use in the area, again, this will be the property. This is a grandfather manufactured home park. This is Catawba Valley Community College's Public Safety Training Center. And if you go down here, this road basically takes you to the hospital areas, Catawba Valley Medical Center. With that, I'll close my remarks and say that staff recommends approval of this annexation petition, and I'll be happy to entertain questions.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you again, sir. All right, this will be a public hearing as well. I'll declare the public hearing open and ask if there's anyone present that would like to speak in opposition of this annexation you've just heard described by Mr. Overby. There doesn't appear to be anyone that wants to speak in opposition. I'll ask if there's anyone present that would like to speak in favor. There being no one desiring to speak, I'll declare the public hearing closed and entertain a motion or discussion.
Move approval of the annexation.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That carries unanimously. Our third and final public hearing this evening, once again, I'll turn it over to our city manager, Mr. Warren Wood.
Thank you, Mayor Gess. Third public hearing is consideration of rezoning petition number 24-10 for properties located at 3109 15th Avenue Boulevard Southeast and a vacant parcel to the south from regional commercial to industrial. It'll be presented by planning manager Cal Overby.
Thanks, sir. Rezoning petition 24-10 was submitted by Pelican Partners LLC, which is a company that owns a business in this location called Rubber Mill Inc. Rubber Mill's been in operation for approximately two to three years in a particular location. They have another location in Alamance County, I believe, in North Carolina. And they basically manufacture gaskets and things of that nature for a number of different industries. That being said, their location is on, excuse me, on 15th Avenue Boulevard is on regional commercial C-3. That particular district permits industrial uses up to a cap of 50,000 square feet. Once you hit that ceiling, the business can no longer expand in that particular location. So in order to provide expansion for this business, it would need to be rezoned. And that's their quest that's going for us tonight, is to rezone the property from regional commercial to industrial. This map shows Hickory by choice future land use. The entire area is shown here as in regional commercial. And a little explanation of why it's like this and, excuse me, this thing sticks here, and what's changed in the past. If you follow this road here, and it goes all the way over here to where the fire station is at, there at that location, that at one point in time in the past is supposed to be a roadway. And that roadway is supposed to connect from Fair Grove Church Road all the way to Mike Johnson Toyota. It's basically a parallel road to I-40. One thing right here is there is an enormous creek and flood plain. And at one point in the past, it was basically thought that, okay, that's not going to happen because of the sheer cost of it. What happened in the meantime? Our plans were not changed for the land use of the area. This area is probably better suited for industrial than it is commercial in this area. There's a number of larger industries back there. There's another industry just beside Rubber Mill, and there's also a Volvo tractor trailer operation just down the street also. And from the zoning perspective, again, we're all looking at C-3 commercial all through here. This is actually, this is actually a planned development that's going in here. It's been in construction for probably eight or 10 years now, because it's going in for townhomes and things. And this here would show you the aerial photography of the area. You see, and this would be the property, another industry here, another industry here. Be CDMC and be Hickory Motor Speedway as far as just general geography of the area. In terms of consistency with the plan, again, I explained that it's not consistent with our plan. However, when our planning commission reviewed it, as well as when staff reviewed it, we thought it was reasonable for the rezoning to be recommended by both staff as well as the planning commission based upon some changes in the area. The biggest change is transportation plans, and our long-range development plans were not then reflected in that change. So basically, that's where we're at with this one. And also, the location of I-40 and other uses in the area, which are actually industrial With that being said, I'll close and say that the planning commission recommended approval based upon my remarks earlier, and staff concurs with the planning commission's recommendation. And I will close and answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Overby?
I just have one. Does the regional commercial zoning that it's currently under accommodate all of the uses, possible uses under industrial, other than just a size stipulation?
Yes, it is basically a size stipulation. Let me back up. Items like junkyards, salvage yards, things of that nature, which are truly industrial, that's not in. What would be permitted in a regional commercial would be industrial service, warehousing, general manufacturing.
For all intents and purposes?
Yes. Yes, especially for really just not nice uses.
Got you. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Once again, this is a public hearing. I'll declare the public hearing open and ask if there's anyone present that would like to speak in opposition of rezoning petition number 24-10. There being no one desiring to speak in opposition, I'll ask if there's anyone present that would like to speak in favor. There being no one desiring to speak, I'll declare the public hearing closed and entertain a motion or discussion.
Move approval of the rezoning petition. Second.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That carries unanimously. We have one departmental report this evening. To introduce our departmental report, I'll turn it over to our city manager, Mr. Warren Wood.
Thank you, Mayor Gess. At your last meeting, you held a public hearing to consider a resolution to abolish the Hickory Public Housing Authority and transfer it to the Western Piedmont Council of Government. You weren't required to do the public hearing, but you wanted to hear from the public on their thoughts. We did that. We, one of the things that we have been trying to do through a series of public records requests is to understand any potential financial liability that the city might incur as a result of transferring this. There's some, there's some general statutes that talk a little bit about who has to assume liabilities of a housing authority. So we wanted to get and want to get a very clear picture of what financial liabilities, you know, might be out there. And obviously, the number one party for city council was making sure those that are served with those Section 8 vouchers are done so in the most efficient way. So we asked you to, I guess, punt for two weeks, and now we're back. So just an update on that. So yesterday, we received over 70 new pages of public records from the Hickory Public Housing Authority that had been requested weeks ago. So the day before this meeting, we got another tranche of public records in hand. And so after an initial view of what we received, there are even more questions that we need to ask. This isn't an investigation. This is trying to get an understanding of the financial liabilities that we may have. So we need to probably look at some other documents to start to unwind. I think we're getting closer. Just so, here's an example, so, of one of the things that, you know, we've learned. So two days after city council held its public hearing, so that's your last meeting, two days after your last meeting, considering the transfer of the housing authority's responsibilities to the Western Piedmont Council of Government, the Hickory Public Housing Authority Board on that Thursday after your Tuesday meeting had a closed session meeting to amend the executive director's employment agreement. So here's potential financial liability that you need to, this is just one example. So they went in a closed session, and it indicated that one of the amendments in the amended employment agreement states it's for the avoidance of doubt in the event that the Hickory, City of Hickory abolishes transfers to another entity, all vouchers in business of the Hickory Public Housing Authority, or causes the cessation of the Hickory Public Housing Authority, the executive, the executive director, is not retained by the entity to which the housing authority vouchers responsibility are transferred at her current position and compensation, the housing authority shall. So what's that saying is, if you were to take the action and transfer it to the COG, and she's not hired on in her current role at her current salary and all that, here's what happens. So pay to the executive as severance pay in lump sum in cash, no later than the 10th day following termination, an amount equal to two and a half times the base salary then in effect. I'm not sure of the in cash. I've never seen that before. But, so that's an example we need to understand. You know, so I've looked at the housing authority's audits. That would be, she makes $145,000 a year for a position working 20 hours a week per the IRS 990 reporting form that we have seen. So that's $290,000 plus or minus. And the housing authority doesn't have that amount of money, so I'm not sure who's going to pay that.
So, so we can have clarity, so the public would know this with clarity. So after we had our city council meeting, and we put up all the statistics, they then, in the same week, two days later, had a closed session, and they made an addendum to her employment.
Correct. And some of this language was in their existing employment agreement. It just clarified to the fine point on what happens if it moves to the COG. So yes. So, and these aren't our numbers, and if somebody's got different numbers, we'd be glad to see them because we need to fully understand. But the question is, that's almost $300,000. I've seen the audits. They don't, from my knowledge, they, if they've got that much money, that would be a tremendous hit to their financial portfolio. So who picks that up if it's a valid agreement? So that's just an example. There are other things. I'm not going to go into the other things. So again, that would be 290,000 paid in cash to the executive director upon the transfer if she's not retained as executive director at her current salary. Again, based on the audit information we've seen, that would be a challenge. So one of the questions would be, who would legally have to pick that up if that is a valid part of her contract? So there's other things that we've got in this last batch that, you know, we need to look at, you know, since yesterday. So again, and I know we just did this to, you know, the last meeting, we asked for two more weeks, and we may come back and ask for two more weeks. I mean, but we just, we have got to fully understand what the financial liability, liabilities may be on the city if you were to take this action. So we would ask that you vote to postpone this decision until your next regular meeting. And I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Based on what you have said, and I want to acknowledge the community's absolute frustration with the housing authority, their performance in fulfilling responsibilities, lack of response to valid complaints, the frequency of the board meetings. They have met seven times in four years. Just seven times. And the lack of inquiry at the meeting has hindered effective oversight and transparency, leaving critical issues like the 200 unused vouchers and the directors failing to report on the HUD website. We deserve a board that is actively advocates for our community needs and ensures that the resources are utilized effectively. This situation has been disheartening for many of us, landlords, residents, city council, and it impacts our overall city's well-being. So I move that we tabled consideration of the transfer of the City of Hickory Public Housing Authority to the Western Piedmont Council of Governments to the next regular meeting.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Is there any further discussion?
Well, I was struggling whether I was going to say anything, but I think I said a lot at the last city council meeting. But I did say that within those two weeks, we keep on digging, we'll find more dirt. I just need to address my disdain for this Hickory Public Housing Authority Board. Where we are now, I said I didn't mind being methodical through the procedural path and process of making sure that we get everything right. I even personally, not only just in informational meetings, but also met with some members of the board, head of the board. I just need the public to know that I appreciate many of you coming out even on tonight because you're looking for some type of resolve and conclusion. And I'm for certainly putting it on the table until we meet again. Let me just show you. Back in July, we've been asking for these Back in July, we've been asking for these public records. Then October first, at our public Hickory City Council meeting, we said we'll give them two weeks. Seventy pages we received, basically, the eleventh hour on a Monday, that we're supposed to know everything that they received and we be ready to vote on today. Who runs a board like that? Which shows me it's more about personal gain than it is about public housing. And I'm done.
Any other comments? All right, we have a motion, we have a second. If there's no further discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is consideration of any appointments to our boards and commissions. I'll ask if there's any council member present that would like to make any recommendations this evening. All right. Any matters not on the agenda, sir?
Yes, sir.
All right, any general comments uh from council or staff? I just have one. I want to once again uh say that we had a very successful Oktoberfest downtown. Uh, I think it was the thirty-seventh year. Uh, I've not attended all thirty-seven of them, but I've attended a lot of them in the past. And I say this every year, it was probably the most well-attended uh Oktoberfest that I've seen. I contribute that to a lot of reasons. One was the pleasant weather that we had and everything that was available. Uh, I just want to say, uh, on the, on behalf of all of our council and staff, the, the folks that, from our public services and other areas that make that area like it never happened. When you go up there on the weekend, there's, there's, I don't know, I think there was an estimated, I heard of fifty thousand people, does that sound correct? So there was an estimated fifty thousand people. And uh, that's a lot of activity, that's a lot of trash, that's a lot of everything. And our coworkers have made that area look like it never happened. And I just want to personally uh tell them how appreciative we are of everyone that had anything to do, whether you were working uh during that time or whether you were part of the crew that helped to get it back to how we see it today. That was an excellent job and we greatly appreciate uh everyone that attended and how uh the turnout was and how everything is back to order now. So thank you for that, uh, it was a tremendous success. Anyone else?
Will say.
All right, I'm going to make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
We got a motion, we got a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you for being here this evening.